I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The third item on our agenda is the consideration of the agenda. Commissioners, are you adding anything to it?
No.
Nope? Okay, then I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda. Okay.
I'll second it.
Great. Discuss it. Any changes? Any thoughts? Vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you. Public commentary is next on our agenda. Please limit your public commentary to the subject we're dealing with tonight, which is the zoning ordinance change. It's in your packet if you haven't read it. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a form that's in there if you haven't filled them out already, and then give them to Laura, and she'll call your name. And also, if you would, please, please limit your time to two minutes. If you can't get it all in within two minutes, just sort of give me the high sign if we have time. I'll try to accommodate you. Okay? Do we have speakers?
We do. I'll call Tom Stillings.
Well, as you know, my name is Tom Stillings, 570 South Golden Beach Drive. And I want to talk to you about that rezoning petition I went around and the danger that you're putting the taxpayers in. Maybe the people that own that property are much more charitable and generous than what I would be. But if I were them, I would be downstate, get myself a real fancy lawyer. And they would be filing a lawsuit if you continue to do what it appears you want to do for something called a taking. Now, the Supreme Court of Michigan has spoken on this many times, and in short, they don't like it because you're stealing something. You gave them a rezoning that rezoning has value. It's theirs. You can't take it back. Some crazy overriding need is. I don't see that happening. So, on behalf of the taxpayers of Torch Lake Township and this foolishness, thank you.
I'd like to remind the public, please, Tom, thank you. Please keep your comments to the subject at hand tonight. Thank you. Who's next?
Rob Premier.
Can you speak up just a little bit, please?
Might need a little more than two minutes, if that's all right.
Take it.
Good evening. I've come before the planning commission in the past, but I am Rob Premier, along with my wife Anne. We own Lake Living Services and Eastport resale shop on M-88. As we read the proposed zoning changes for village business presented in the packet tonight, we ask that you pay close attention to some specific proposed changes. First, the proposed statement for village business and village residential noted in section 10.01 is to quote, "encourage and maintain the mixture of residences and businesses on a neighborhood scale within the village business and village residential districts," end quote. Then the ordinance goes on to list acceptable businesses: beauty shops, grocery stores, hardware stores, banks, medical and dental offices, and more. All that sounds fine, and many of the new proposed language seems reasonable to ensure beautification of this area. We are confident that you will closely review all of the proposed changes, but also ask yourself if some of the changes will essentially prohibit any businesses from operating, any new businesses from operating in Eastport. That would expressly not be compatible with the purpose of encouraging a mixture of residences and businesses in Eastport. One example that stands out is page 10-6 in the ordinance. Section 10.05, General Regulations, letter F, Additional Commercial Design Standards, letter triple I, point B. This is a brand-new section. It stipulates that the first floor shall contain a minimum of 65 percent, nearly two-thirds, of windows facing the road. Think about that. The first floor of any building must be two-thirds of windows. That's a tall order, especially considering that none of the existing buildings on village business lots have that today. My rough estimate is that the Eastport Market and Assisted Living Center each have about 10 percent windows. The Torch Lake Cafe probably has around 12 percent. Even if my estimates are a little off or even a lot off, they don't come anywhere close to 65 percent. This building doesn't even come close to 65 percent. Presumably, existing construction would be grandfathered in. But the intent of the changes tells me that those three businesses do not represent what the township now wants from the business community, that somehow they are inferior to the standard. Otherwise, the township would not be proposing this change. To expect that any building newer existing would have 65 percent windows on the facade facing the road is not reasonable, or frankly, not practical. Another new proposed change noted in section 10.05, General Regulations, letter E, as found on page 10-5 of the ordinance, this would prohibit any parking in front of the business. Do you know of any business that does not offer parking near the front door? It seems unreasonable to implement, especially in northern Michigan, where snow is the norm for much of the year. It's an undue burden to ask one's customers to walk from the side or rear of the building. All of the existing businesses I just mentioned have parking out front. It's also interesting that there are two proposed changes unique to the village business section that are not mentioned in the commercial section. It is surprising to us that the requirements are different, especially when the additional burden falls on the lesser of the zoning designations. Village business lots now should have a 512 roof pitch and a 65 percent window that I mentioned earlier. These two items are not mentioned in the commercial section, though all other requirements seem to match word for word. That seems an intentional distinction proposed by the author to impact certain businesses in the village business and village residential zones. We implore you to consider why there is even mention of window percentage, and if it is, and if you feel it's important to include, to consider a more reasonable and practical percentage of 10 percent, as most existing structures have. Please consider each and every new requirement and its impact on the true purpose as noted in section 10.01, letter A. Again, the purpose is to encourage and to maintain the mixture of residences and businesses and to maintain and enhance the existing small-town character of Eastport. There are no proposed changes to that purpose statement. If the true intention is to encourage a mix of businesses and residences and maintain character and charm, let businesses do that. Please don't appear welcoming to businesses and then later apply so many restrictions that makes them possible for them. Thank you.
Bill Peterson.
You got time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bill Peterson, 12229 Yelton Road. I'm up here tonight because I've passed out two things, and I have some for the audience if you guys would like to see them too. It has to do with conflict of interest. The first packet I passed out to you is right from the MTA Planning Commission handbook specifically dealing with types of conflict of interest. Another reason why I'm up here tonight and some of the things that I've shared with you is some of you planning commission members may not know that there are three members serving on the planning commission that are actively passing around petitions for a referendum to take away the decision that this planning commission board made on the M-88 rezone. To me, that's an obvious conflict of interest.
Bill, if I may, please, is this relative to the subject tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
And where I'm going with it is, is if these planning commission members, Jerry Colka, Bill Stridiron, and Barb Rudros, are willing to go back and undo the work that this planning commission has already done on a village business project, how can you prove to the taxpayers of the township that they are the best ones to be making a decision as to what changes need to be made in that district? Mrs. Rudros voted for the rezone, then approved the minutes in which it said she voted for the rezone, and then promptly took a petition around to get it on the ballot to undo the work that the rest of you have done on this rezone. As a member of the public, it terrifies me that a governmental agency could give a permit, not even give you a chance to get going on it, and then want to yank it away. Number two, it is a huge red flag to me, having served on the board in the past, having paid many legal bills of how does this look to the public, how does this look to the taxpayer, and what is each and every one of yours liability if you continue to make decisions when, in fact, when you look at the rules from MTA, any member of the public can plainly put together that there is obviously a conflict of interest from some of these individuals whose minds are already made up as it pertains to the most recent village business that came before this planning commission. And at the very least, it's at least an error of impropriety. And if you're at all in doubt, I ask that you do the right thing. Do not partake in the discussion and the voting on any changes in the village business, village residential zones, unless the three of them excuse themselves from having that, or at the very least, don't talk about it until the entire boards have gotten together and sought legal counsel as to the taxpayers' liability in lawsuits going forward. Thank you.
Randy Bishop.
How much time do we get?
Two minutes.
My name's Randy Bishop, 11089 Wood Special Drive. I'd like to reiterate much of what Mr. Peterson just said, also what I've heard of Mr. Stillings. The planning commission is up, I believe, at the end of this month. There'll be new members that will be joining the planning commission. Is that correct, November 1st? So, in that vein, I question even your authority to make any decisions in your current capacity because some of you are lined up. You won't even be on this planning commission come November 1st. Number two, any actions you may take will end up in court. The people already talked with have expressed the excessive overregulation that's been going on. That's why some of you are no longer going to be on the planning commission, and for good reason. Taxpayers are sick and tired of special interest groups and individuals passing around a petition thinking that that's going to carry any weight with the laws of this state. It does not. This Nazism form of enforcement has got to stop. And there will be lawsuits coming forward. I guarantee it. Now, you want to take that personal liability potential? Because all we have to do is pierce the governmental immunity. Conflicts of interest can be proven. It's documented. It's there. Those of you who do have those said conflict of interest that Mr. Peterson just referred to, recuse yourself. Don't participate in the discussion and don't participate in the vote. Therefore, your liability is extinguished. But if you want to continue down this form of running this township illegally the way you're doing it, see you in court.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Tom?
Thank you, sir.
I'm Tom Peterson, 12232 Yelton Road. I'm looking at these new ordinances that you want to put out. I don't agree with them at all, not all of them. 3,000 feet, I think, is pretty small. And you got on here that you want building materials that consist of brick, stone, or other natural materials, steel exterior, not allowed, not permitted. You already have steel buildings in there. Steel is just as good as anything you got, but I don't know why that can't be, why that has to be not permitted. And I agree with just about everything everybody's said here tonight. And also, if you get a bigger building, most of them have to have a flat surface or something to run their compressors and everything on it, so it can't all be a pitched roof. Because if you do that, then you're going to get some, definitely added material up on top that you don't need. And most of these big buildings, you take your food market down here, they got all their compressors and stuff up on top. You can't sit it on a pitched roof. It's got to be flat. So, some of these things in here I disagree with a lot of them, really, and I don't really know how you can pass this tonight, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to number six, conflict of interest. I'm sorry, correspondence. Number five, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
None that I've worked.
Nope. Now, we'll move on to conflict of interest. Does anybody on the commission have a conflict of interest?
Absolutely.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you going to recuse yourself?
Or I want to talk first.
Well, but we can do that.
Fellow board members, we got a big problem here. I mean, I don't know what's going on here, but I'm looking at these petitions. I mean, this is yours, Mr. Stridiron, Bill. The first two people on here, they have identical signatures and handwriting. They must be really good. They must be able to sign each other. I don't know what's going on here, but... And then you look on this conflict of interest that's highlighted.
Jason, excuse me. Could you turn your mic to here, please?
Then you look on the conflict of interest that's highlighted. We got to read that. Read that out loud. "The conflict of interest can also exist if a planning commissioner has already publicly stated opposition or support for a particular project or use inside or outside the planning commission, but in a public forum." Well, this doesn't get more public than anything I know right there. "Then a bias has already been formed. That is usually considered a conflict of interest and probably a denial of due process if the commissioner votes. The planning commissioners have a duty to not prejudge situations and to keep an open mind until after the hearing, when all their written and oral information has been presented." And that's what I've been saying the whole time. We got to have an open mind here, and some of us don't. And it's black and white right here, and I don't know how we can continue to go in this meeting any further. This is a problem. I'd like to make a motion to end this meeting right now. Do I get a second?
I'd like to give everybody a chance to talk before we do that, against what you're saying, but for react on anything official like that. I myself would like to say something, and maybe others would also.
If he'll let you, I'm for it.
Turn your mic down if you would, please. Thank you.
First of all, I've kind of been dark about all of this. I've been hearing about this. There it is.
No, sorry. Been hearing about this petition. This is the first time I've laid eyes on it, and I have some questions about it. Now, as has already been stated, this body has acted upon this, voted, recommended to the board to pass it. It's gone to the county, and it's been okayed by the board. Could somebody explain to me what legal authority this holds, that has this whole thing held up? These people can't have access and use of their property after all the legal process has been done? What is it about this piece of paper that has everything at a halt?
It really doesn't. There's a couple of things that are happening. I'm going to explain how I see it, and that doesn't make me an expert. A lawyer really has to answer your question. That is, by the way, that's not a petition. That's a referendum. That's number one. And what that is, is that's a referendum to put the decision that the planning commission made and that the board approved on the ballot, so the citizens of the township can vote on it.
I understand.
So, that's what that is. If you recall, I recused myself from that particular meeting. Beating's plural. So, is that a true question?
No. I want to know, just because somebody wants to pass this petition around and wants it on a referendum for vote by the entire township, whether or not that was a legal and a justifiable decision by the board, what legal authority does this have to hold anything up? Has a judge ordered an injunction or a permit that they can't have their property?
They can do whatever they want.
Well, then, I would agree.
However, there's another overlying factor.
Okay.
Our township board issued a moratorium on all building for 60 days with the option to go another 30 days if they need to.
But wasn't the moratorium on applications?
I'm sorry?
The moratorium was on any new application?
It affects all village business, Bob.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the two are not related.
Okay, so let's put this aside and talk about the moratorium.
Okay.
What happens after 60 days or an additional?
I don't know. You have to ask my planning, our planning commissioner.
I do want to go back just real quick about the petition, the moratorium. So, what happens with that is that the ordinance amendment doesn't take effect until a couple of things happen. So, right now, it is, I mean, their zoning is still village residential. It has not changed to village business because we receive these petitions. I don't, this is out of my world. You know, it's in the clerk's hands right now in dealing with it. And if you have specific questions, I check with the clerk or with the supervisor about it, just because it's not really my animal. You know, it's out of, we did our stuff in the zone, planning and zoning. It's not on somewhere else. As far as this moratorium, there was a built-in extension, 30-day extension on it. So, that takes it to the beginning of December. I don't remember the exact date. I want to say December 7th or something like that. And then the moratorium expires. So, people, property owners, individuals could apply for permits, rent use permits, and special use or cycling reviews for the commercial businesses. So, once the moratorium goes away, we don't have that protection of not receiving any applications.
So, how does that affect that particular property that we're talking about on M-88 that was recently okay to be rezoned?
Well, it's because of the petitions that we've received, it's still zoned village residential. So, they can apply for permits as village residential because they're not zoned village business.
So, they could apply for a special use permit under an hour of village residential.
For a use that's listed there, yes.
Could I follow up on that? I guess I'm not familiar with this referendum process. But at any time, just a few citizens get together and sign a piece of paper, and it puts this whole process on hold even though the board has approved it?
It has to do with timing. So, it's based on when it's published, when the decision's made, and then there's a certain number of signatures that are required to be obtained.
Is this part of the process though possible that citizens can go ahead and, you know, change things if there's a vote on it?
That is the remedy. For any zoning amendment, the remedy for the public is to go through the referendum process to get it on the ballot for people to be able to vote on it for the general public.
And what decides ultimately whether, when, and whether or not, I guess, it ends up on the ballot and when we vote on it?
I believe that's all up to the clerk, but like I said, this isn't, that may not be a correct statement.
Has this has happened in the past on other issues? This is not the first time this occurred.
I don't know about in the township. I don't have the history.
Townships in general?
For the state of Michigan, yeah. It's something that's allowed, yep.
Yeah, my second question was, has this happened in our township?
I don't know about the township, but I can tell you, you know, in our township, they had a referendum where they had just passed a new zoning ordinance, and they got the signatures, and it went to vote, and it got turned down. So, they went back to it.
Was there one just in Traverse City too on high-rise or the height of the building? Was that a referendum?
I don't know. It might have started as a referendum, and then now they amended their charter. But then there was one over in Neyland County this last year that they had a rezoning request and ended up on the ballot. I don't remember which community though, but I think they voted on that in maybe August even of this year.
So, what do you think, Bill? Do you feel like there's a conflict of interest?
No.
No?
Absolutely not.
And your reasoning?
My reasoning, because there isn't. I don't benefit from this in any monetary fashion, which if you read the MTA statements, that's the primary reason for conflict of interest. And if you recall, and just for everybody up here, you guys are kind of washing two separate things together. These are two separate issues. One is the rezoning on M-88, of which there's been a referendum signed and submitted, and it's in the proper sequence. But that has nothing to do with tonight's meeting. Tonight's meeting's on looking at how we're going to move forward as a township, on what guidelines, restrictions, however you want to put it, we want to put in place for new structures being built in our township.
But what we're talking about now is whether or not we feel that you three should be part of that.
You can feel any way you want. I'm telling you, I do not have a conflict of interest.
Laura? You got any thoughts on this?
I can say that I am impartial. I don't have any conflict of interest. And I trust my commission members to feel the same. And it's above me to deal with anything as a result of any of that.
I mean, do you feel comfortable moving forward? Would you like to seek legal counsel?
I'm okay moving forward.
No, if I may, Jason. We're here tonight to discuss, not M-88, we're here tonight to discuss what's on the agenda for this evening.
I understand that, Bill, but with the actions that you have taken this route.
I'm a little concerned on why you have those documents, number one.
Really?
Those were given to the clerk.
They're public documents.
No, they're not until she files them. They are not public documents until she files them, but that's a whole definition.
They say they're received. There's a stamp on them.
Until she files them with Antrim County. They are not a public document. So, I'm a little concerned on why you have those, but that's either here or there.
Can I, I got one more question for you.
They were just handed out.
Bill Peterson just handed them out.
Yeah. He shouldn't have.
Well, that's where he got them from.
What's that?
That's where he got them from, is what I was saying.
These are not public documents, number one. Number two is, we're here to discuss a whole different issue tonight.
I just got one more, I got one more question. I just got one more question.
So, I would like you to get back to the agenda if we would, please.
I got one more question.
Sure.
How did you present this petition to these people?
Take a look, read it.
I want to know what you said to them.
Read it.
Because I have talked to some people that have signed this, and what they said is not what this says.
You can hear, everybody that I talked to personally, I had them read the top of the referendum.
That's funny because a couple of the people I talked to signed your piece of paper.
Everybody can tell you something different. I can speak to myself.
So, they're lying? Our citizens are lying?
Everybody could speak for themselves. I'd like to suggest we move on if there's no other discussion.
Yeah, I would like to say, I, you know, on this, I signed the petition, you know, I was also concerned about it in the planning commission. But I did not approach the petition as a board member, as a private citizen. I was understanding... I was understanding that it's the right of citizens to do this petition, a referendum, to work on it. Um, I, I did not initiate this subject, the board just took part of the board and they sent it, and this is the moratorium that we're working on. And I'm very objective on the moratorium, I might have some different viewpoints than other people, but I'm not saying the petition is, on this, there's two separate subjects. Now, if you're asking me, do I feel I can be objective and try to be unbiased on the basis of the moratorium that I got from the board, you know, you voted on it and others did too, right? You were one of the voters.
Oh, yeah.
Correct. And what happened with the moratorium? Who do they send it back to?
I voted no on it.
Oh, I thought you did yes, I'm sorry, I just, I'll take that back. But I still got it from the board. Board one to vote them, I guess, was, okay. I stand corrected, thank you, on that part of it. Uh, if you never got this, I wouldn't be, you know, looking at it, I'd be looking at other issues that are coming out to the planning commission. I think I'm always objective, and there've been times in the past history of this board, I took yes votes when I felt strongly against something personally, but I felt it was within the framework, what's going on. Personally, I, you know, yeah, I'd like to find out what's legal opinion, and any legal opinion, that's why we got two lawyers, and that's why we'll go turn the judges to decide what is correct. I don't feel signing the petition is on something that I can review here as one of the commissioners, and I'm going to vote what I think is correct in proposing. Now, do I say I can't look at it all because the petition? I don't see the correlation to this, because this also passed commercial and was something the board sent to us. Okay?
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, you want to agree with me, but that's where I'm coming from. Um, I think in this art, if you go back and see what they did, I'm very objective, I can see who would not go and agree with something.
Anybody else?
Barbara, I could ask you, you know, from your, you want to list anything that was on the petition here?
Yeah, I did circulate the petition, but prior to that, I had voted at the planning commission, based on what criteria we were given, told that this is how you decide, um...
And we talked about it.
And we talked about it, yeah.
We talked a lot about it.
We did, but it was very, what was incongruous was, if you voted no on one, did that mean that you didn't approve it? If you voted yes on two, does that mean you do approve it? It was very confusing to me how the, the factors interrelated. Um, and yes, we did pass it. When it went to the board, I spoke at the board and asked them not to approve it because I felt that we had not followed the proper procedure. We were supposed to decide based on what was in our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance did not contain the factors we were given. Our zoning ordinance, in fact, did not contain any factors for deciding that question. So I didn't feel like it was appropriate procedure had been followed. So I went to the board meeting and I spoke against approving, against them approving the, what we had done. Um, they didn't listen to me, so they, they went ahead and, and approved it, uh, which is their prerogative, but the citizens also have a prerogative to do a referendum. It's, it's a procedure that is set out in the law, how you go about it, what you have to do. Right now, we gathered signatures, we gathered more than the necessary amount, we submitted them to Kathy, the clerk. The clerk has a responsibility to verify the signatures, which I assume she's in that process now, I don't know, and I don't know real detail about the process, so I don't know how much time she has to do that, or how much time she has before she has to send it to the county, but once she does that, then she's supposed to file it with the county. Okay? Um, that, that, that whole process is part of the democracy of this governing body being able to be challenged by citizens wanting to submit it to a vote of the people. And there's nothing nefarious about it, there's nothing wrong with it, it just is a procedure that does exist under the law, and if you're going to come here and complain about a referendum, you ought to at least do your research and know what a referendum is, because I'm getting from most of the people that have spoken, they don't even know what a referendum is. So, you know, without that, I, I feel funny defending myself against something that I'm being accused of, that this is ludicrous, and by people who don't know what they're talking about. So, I don't have a conflict of interest on this. This was a matter that came to us because the board instituted the moratorium and quote, directed the planning commission to deal with the commercial districts, both the village business and the, and the, um, complete township zoning commercial districts. And that's what was done. This was done primarily by Sarah. She had came to our last meeting, we discussed it, we asked questions, we made comments, she took all that down and she went and she drafted this.
At the direction of the board.
At the direction of the board, because of their steering committee, it wasn't up to us whether we took this up or not.
Barbara, she also drafted the steps that we took to approve the rezoning.
I agree with you, but that didn't put them into our zoning ordinance, that didn't mean that that was the appropriate procedure to follow to approve that.
And you approved the minutes a month later.
The minutes were accurate. I did vote for it at the planning commission, I've admitted that. And I'm circulating petitions because I think it needs to go to a referendum, because when I look back at what we did and how we did it, I don't think it was proper procedure. So for a procedurally, for a procedural issue, I'm saying, I think the planning commission was wrong, I think board was wrong, and I think that the people of this township ought to decide on that issue under referendum, because we obviously have not done it properly, to me, in my opinion, we have not done it properly. So it should be up to the citizens whether they want that to happen or not. Um, so anyway, I don't, I don't have a conflict of interest, um... There are, you know, it's amazing to me that you would even bring this up without knowing exactly what a conflict of interest is. I mean...
I read what the conflict of interest is, it's black and white.
This right here is not the full story.
No, it's not.
There's a whole litany of law on this, okay? There's a whole bunch of, of court opinions, there's a whole bunch of information out there about what a refer, what a conflict of interest is, and primarily it requires that you have some vested interest in what's going on. In other words, I would benefit or be, um, the opposite of that, by the decision made on the Vermeer property, and I don't have that kind of interest. I'm not going to benefit or be harmed or anything by that decision on the Vermeer property. So I, I don't have a conflict of interest. So if, if you, if you want to pursue that, pursue lawsuits on that basis, please go ahead, but I am not going to sit another one of these meetings and defend myself against this kind of assault to my integrity. I'll do it in my, I'll do it in my answer.
I'll make a comment. I would, you seem very upset about this.
Yeah, I, I'm going to excuse myself.
Would you mind, just let me finish? Do you have a motion, President? Just a minute, just a minute. I would suggest that we tone it down a little bit and discuss it further, um, but I want to get back to what we're doing tonight. We're here at the direction of the board, of which you remember. That's the subject for tonight's meeting. The referendum is not the subject for tonight's meeting. And just for clarity, I did recuse yourself on anything to do with the M-88 zoning. So let's get back to the, at the issue at hand, at the direction of the board that we're reviewing, um, section 10.
I did make a motion, though, do we need to follow through with that?
Repeat your motion, please.
I make a motion that this meeting is over.
Do we have a second? No. We do not have a second.
I'll second it, so we can...
You can second it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And can I?
What, discussion?
You know, it's...
I'm going to call, hey, discussion, please?
You know, this whole thing troubles me, I have seen a lot of emails about it, and I know I'm off subject, Bill, but I haven't tried to stay on to why we're here tonight, but this issue keeps coming up and, and, you know, first of all, I, you know, I don't think it's strange, I mean, it seems odd to me, is all I hear about it through the emails, is that once this board has passed something and then it's went through the process with the county and the board passes it, that there are three people on this board who are part of a referendum to change what the board decides. Now, I'm not an expert on referendums, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but that does raise a lot of questions to people who don't understand this, which, which I don't. I mean, it's, it's just an unusual situation, and I'm uncomfortable with it. But in reading this, Barbara, you know, I, I went by the instructions that Sarah provided us too, and she made it perfectly clear that our code wasn't very detailed in this. So she provided a number of criteria for us to look at that seemed reasonable things to consider when you're considering a rezoning change. She also, I thought, explained, was rather confusing, that when we look at the, there's no black and white way to just, you know, that you have to win by a majority, they all have to pass, and they don't. And I, I asked, I asked the people who think we've made a mistake now, what did we do wrong and what should we have done instead?
I personally think that our zoning ordinance is lacking, and it does in certain places put us in a bad position, and we need to fix those things. We are missing those factors so that we can defend ourselves and, and make a good decision. So I, I agree, I think that Sarah gave us something to follow, which was much better than nothing. Without those things, it would have been making a decision on a whim, and, and so I think it was good that we followed those things.
Right, but there are those who think that by following those things, we didn't correctly make the decision, and, and I'm wondering what it is. I, I mean, I thought, given the circumstances, we did rather well and considered that rather thoroughly, and those factors we considered were all rather pertinent to it, and I don't, I can't think of any we left out that we should have considered. And I guess I'm confused by this, and, and I don't understand that. The right to petition, it's inherent right to vote, that is the, you know, when I limit research and tell my people, there are three steps to the planning, passing, something in zoning. The first step is the planning commission, generally, I mean, something...
No, no, Jerry, but Jerry, we're on question.
The second, wait, let me finish here. The second is it, but the third is the petition, we're arguing about the petition here when we're trying to do something that the board sent to us, and is there a conflict? Because I did a, you know, petition that I think, you know, can be changed, and that's going to argue what happened at that meeting, but the citizen's right is, from everything I've been taught, and I really am advocate of voting and people's right to vote, and it's right here, we did, even on petition, it does not say, hey, here we want to turn it over to the people, the right to vote on this. And that is separate from the, from saying, I have a conflict here to review something that the board sent to me. I'm not suggesting the conflict, what I'm suggesting is by being involved in this, you are looking at the board that I'm part of and suggesting the board failed here somehow. I'm not accusing anyone, saying this is the right... But if you didn't think we'd done the wrong thing, the referendum wouldn't exist. Why should I have to defend me right in a referendum? I think that is... I wasn't asking you to defend anything. I was just asking, I, I mean, there's several people, obviously, after looking at this, have changed their mind.
I, I think...
And I'm, that concerns me, and I, I don't understand it.
Barbara?
The only person that changed their mind after the fact is me. Jerry voted against the rezoning to begin with, Bill recused himself, I voted for it at the meeting, uh, and then I, I thought about it because what got me was the, the factor of, is the zoning, rezoning necessary, which it was like seventh on the list of things we were considering. And if you say the zoning, the rezoning is not necessary, then that should be the end of it. You don't rezon it, I don't think, but we did rezon, we did, we said, okay, go ahead because, well, so what, that one's not going to count very much or whatever, and we went ahead and, and, uh, voted to rezon it. But when I thought about it later, I thought, well, wait a minute, if the zoning isn't necessary, why are we even considering it? That was one of the factors on the list.
Because he applied to rezon it, we have an obligation to consider it. I, I don't, was unnecessary, it's a question of whether the property owner asked to have it rezoned or not, not whether it's necessary.
But if he didn't have to have it rezoned to do what he wanted to do, then why are we rezoning it? Do you even understand what my problem was with the factors?
No, I don't, that's my question, I don't.
I, I understand what you're saying, I think that we as a township could have done a better job at saying, hey, you don't have to apply for this, you could apply for a special use. We could have done that upfront, but there we were with the job to do, as the stance.
Grabbing what, how the hell do we do it, right?
Any other discussion? So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there more discussion? The motion is to adjourn the meeting, I want to remind everybody that. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Jason, your vote?
Absolutely.
Cole?
No.
Meeting, you don't want to, you don't want to end the meeting?
No.
Okay. Bob?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Bill says no. Laura?
No.
Barbara? No. The meeting continues.
Y'all have a good night.
Well, that's unprecedented and disappointing, Jason. That was your trustee that just walked out of this meeting. Okay, we're going to go on to number seven. Purpose of a special meeting, village business slash commercial zone district discussion. Sarah's proposed a number of changes to our zoning ordinance, um, Sarah, do you want to take it from here?
Sure, sure. Um, so if you'll recall, it wasn't that long ago, we had a, a special meeting to talk about the village business and, uh, commercial zoning districts and putting in some requirements, additional requirements, um, and changing a few things. One of the items we talked about was, um, requiring retail uses that were over a certain square feet to obtain a special use permit. Um, so in here, you'll see in both the village business and the commercial district that, um, retails that are over, retail that are under 3,000 square feet are a site plan review, and then anything from 3,000 to 15,000 are special use permit. Um, instead of, as it's currently drafted, it's just 1,500 square feet and under is a site plan review.
Sure, if I, if I may interrupt you?
Yeah.
Um, in previous meetings years ago, one of our consultants indicated that you shouldn't drive down a US 31 as an example and see dramatic differences between communities. It should sort of kind of flow and have back and forth as they grow. Did you look at neighboring communities when you looked at this information and what they had in place and why they're doing what they're doing?
Yes, I mean, there's lots of communities, they all have different ways of dealing with it, but...
They're tweaking it, yeah.
Typically, um, you would see some sort of a, I'm going to say typically for more rural communities that have limited commercial areas, you know, you're not Traverse City, you're not Garfield where Grand Traverse Mall is, you know, where that's what, they're in the commercial business. You know, we're a residential community, we have limited commercial activity, kind of nodes of commercial, they're more villagey, they have this hamlet feel, so they're definitely smaller in your, um, commercial activities that are there, um, which is similar to surrounding communities as well. Um, something else we talked about was adding lot coverage requirements and pervious surface maximums, so I guess I just, the numbers and those items that are in front of you are numbers that I put in here, the planning commission has not discussed these specific numbers yet, so that's what we're here to do tonight, it's a starting point. Um, if you say, no, I don't like that number, or you think it's too extreme, please, you know, adjust as you see necessary or ask me to, to look something up for you to find a different number, a different requirement, but this kind of comes from, um, my experience working in communities that have, um, villages, um, usually they're a little bit more established village that has a typical downtown, um, but there is some village residential... there is some village residential and commercial, so trying to kind of put all that together in to deal with Eastport and the Torch Lake Village that doesn't really have your typical downtown buildings but would have kind of commercial, but you may not want them to look like just any other commercial building. So we added some lot coverage and impervious surface maximums and I did cut these back a little bit, so there's more green space. Our current ordinance does not have any impervious surface or maximum lot coverage. And I think that's important in every district, but since we're talking about this one, we'll start here with, with these two districts. Add some required landscaping, did it at the foundation of the building and at the road right of way as, as areas to kind of start with it. I like the foundation requirement plantings because so many ordinances have all this landscaping on the site and then you get next to the building and they just have sidewalks or rocks or, you know, but you can put some bushes in that help with the aesthetics of what the building looks like and just feels, it just has a better feel about it with the foundation. Plus it doesn't require as much actual landscaping because you're not saying for every thousand square feet of side area, you're required to plant a tree. You know, this is very, they're disturbing this, they're putting this building in, they need to put some landscaping there if they want to leave the rest of the lot as trees or grass or, you know, deal with what they have. But then also put in some of the road right of way, so that's, you know, kind of at 10 feet right next to the road where they'd be required to plant a certain number of trees and shrubs. The parking, we talked about as well. That was something the planning commission wanted to look at a little bit more, so these parking requirements require side and rear parking with no parking in the front of the building. In the zoning district, the minimum front yard setback is, well, in the village business, the minimum setback is 25 feet. So you could put parking, a little bit of parking in that 25 feet right up next to the road right of way, but ideally with having this side and rear parking, you're going to be pushing those buildings up closer to the road, you kind of get more of that villagey feel because you have, the buildings are the first thing you see, not the parking lots in that situation. And then we had some design standards for the roof pitch, window requirements, materials and trash screening. So those were some items, like I said, I took from my experience in dealing with some of the village businesses, village commercial areas in ways to help improve the aesthetics of the building. You know, I think there were some good points about the window requirements made in what we have. You know, you definitely don't want to put something that's too restrictive in there. But at the same time, I like having the window requirements because then you have these buildings that, in a village especially, they function more like, like homes and they feel more like that than a big commercial business. And the materials without the steel, so people aren't putting up just pole barn structures or looking, pole barn looking structures and using those for our, you know, where we want to have this hamlet, we want to have this villagey feel, but then you have a large pole barn essentially right there. So to help with that. And we just don't have any trash screening requirements in our zoning ordinance, so I think that's important when we're talking about our village business and our commercial districts. You know, in the rewrite, we'll throw a general area about trash screening, but as we're trying to fix what we have and deal with what we have, I threw that in there as well.
Is your overriding concern on a lot of these points? The master plan, I keep it in?
Yeah, I think it is. I think it's important, the master plan, I think the purpose section of our commercial districts, when you're looking at some of those to, to help provide and implement that part of it too. I think that the design standards are an important way to do that.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Under Q, I'm getting twisted here, so bear with me. 10.03Q.
So on page 10, four?
I'm sorry?
On page 10, four?
10, four, yes.
Okay.
Will this type of action require site plan reviews?
This is moving it to a special use permit.
Okay.
So item Q, any of those retail stores larger than 3,000, less than 15, will be required to go through the special use process, which requires that additional public hearing and notification within 300 feet.
Okay. Follow-up question, if I can. So we get a special use hearing before the planning commission and the planning commission approves it, as an example. Then it goes to the board, it's done.
Yes, both, a site plan and a special use are both done at the planning commission.
Okay, so they either reject it or approve it?
Yes.
And it doesn't go anywhere after that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, something I forgot.
I just want to make sure it's the same thing. Yeah, for a second there, I was thinking about this, which way it goes. And like, for example, we did the Red School House, which is not red anymore, we just approved it. Is that the same thing would go through this?
Yes.
So it doesn't go to the board? Okay.
Right, that's the application for the individual development just stays at the planning commission level.
Thank you.
And something I forgot to mention, it's not in my memo, but I was thinking about it today and it was brought up at the last month's meeting and I don't, I just thought about it today, but is kind of square footage of what other buildings are, commercial buildings, to try to give you a perspective on what size it is. So this room is 1,600 square feet. Eastport Market, he mentioned it was about 15,000 last month, so I had about 13,000, 14,000. The Torch Lake Cafe is 4,000 square feet and this is just taken from the aerial and I measured the outside of the building, so, you know. In Elk Rapids, at the corner, at the light there, there's a real estate office, it's on the northeast corner of that light. That's 3,000 square feet, that office building. And the restaurant that's across the street, or kitty corner, is 5,000 square feet. And the Village Market in Elk Rapids is about 20,000 square feet. It's a little bit bigger than ours here. Your typical Walgreens, you know, I'm thinking of the ones that are in Traverse, across from Myers, there's one out at Chum's Corner, kind of your normal sized Walgreens building, those are 15,000 square feet. And so I was just trying to think of something, some places that we've all might have been that kind of give you a perspective or you see or drive by every day to help you look at square footages. And I mean, I guess like when you're looking at the grocery stores, you know, they do have back areas that we don't get to be a part of, so your perspective's a little bit different. But I think the Walgreens, they have a back room, but it's not as large as some of those, so I, I feel like they might have a little bit, might have a little bit better feel there maybe and because they're not so tall, you kind of can see the whole thing when you're in there. Thank you.
Question, no, go ahead. Question here. So Village Market, is that commercial or village?
That's village business.
Village business.
Mm-hmm.
So.
The Eastport Market.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
You're right.
Yes, I, I brought the village, yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's village business?
That is a village business, all right in that area on 31, both sides of the road.
Well, it's commercial where Brownwood is though, right? That's why I was just digging out the map here.
Commercial's much more limited. We kind of have a couple of parcels just scattered throughout the township that have the commercial designation on them.
Yeah, as I recall, when we approved that for green or whatever, that was commercial, wasn't it?
Yes, I believe it was.
Yes, so like right out in front of Torch Port where the hangers are, that's all commercial. So when you're doing your rezoning, you can take a look at that too and see that's all commercial. We've got the, they're not a landscape business, but they're more of like a contractor's yard just north of, of the airport on the same side of the road. There's a little, I think they are, they call themselves a landscaping company, but they have like rocks and things you can get there.
Oh.
Excuse me, that's what I'm like, what is? You know, they're zoned commercial. And then you have some down on, what is that, Crestwell? And 31, there's some parcels right there that are commercial. So the commercial is very limited in the township for straight up commercial. We have, we have more parcels that are zoned village business. I don't know acreage wise if you would say that, but there's definitely more parcels that are zoned village business.
Would you put this in place here, just in Eastport Market? Thank you. I was thinking that too, it's the Eastport Market. Would this become non-conforming for Eastport Market?
He would, well, in certain aspects he would. His use would not though, because he's under 15,000 square feet. So he may have not went through the special use process, but he's, he's considered a conforming use because we allow that use in the district. Yeah, yes. And we're not, we wouldn't be, we're not changing the maximum size, so our current ordinance says 15,000 square feet and under we allow. So we're not all of a sudden putting this high end limit on it that we didn't have before, it's always been 15,000. So, and I bring that up just because if, say they want to put this big addition on there, we would say, you can't do that because you're getting over the 15,000 square feet.
Right.
But that would, that's the same today as if we were to adopt this ordinance.
That clarifies, that was what I was concerned about, you know, they want to be fair, this causes some issues.
Yeah, the parking would be non-conforming and some of the design standards on the structure would be non-conforming, but, you know, non-conformities can continue as long as you have them and as long as they exist. So as long as they didn't rip out the parking and, you know, plant grass and then want to put parking back in at a later time, you know, they'd be okay.
Thank you.
The under, on 10, five, 10 dash five. The very bottom one, A. I was informed tonight that the minimum pitch on a roof should be 412, not 512. And it has something to do with shingles. I'm not really following all, I'm a builder, but I got that information cleared up. So I would recommend we take a look at 412 rather than 512.
Yeah.
Also, under F, in keeping with the hamlet theme, a comfortable, human scale, environment maintaining of village attractiveness. And somewhere in there, I would suggest we use the word hamlet to keep it consistent.
Where's that?
Under F on 10 dash five.
Yep.
If you look at the very first page of this ordinance, it refers to under B as a hamlet, hamlets of Eastport and Torch Lake.
While we're on that section, in that paragraph F, it's got, the very last part of it says, providing a unique sense of place in the village commercial district.
Hmm.
That should be village business, I was assuming.
Yes. I have a hard time with that and I don't know why, I always want to call it village commercial.
Well, don't do that.
I know.
I have another one too, Sarah, I don't understand. On section 10.02, on page 10, one, you've got the listed, the permitted uses listed for village business. And the last three are wine, meat and cider tasting rooms, microbrewery beer, micro distillery spirits. And then under special uses, next section, the first three things listed are the wine, the microbrew and the micro distillery. So are they permitted or are they special uses?
That's one of the things we're working on in the rewrite. Yeah, especially because like wine retail, I guess you could say is different than the tasting room, but then yeah, Q says wine tasting rooms and then A and 10, three says wine tasting rooms. So I'd have to go back and look at that specific amendment to see if there's anything that would clarify that, but.
I just don't think it should be in both of those sections, right?
Right, yeah, and that's what, this is how it currently exists in the, in our ordinance that we have. So I can go back though and look at this 15 amendment and see if maybe something just got inserted where it shouldn't have been.
Okay.
We could, I mean, we could amend that right now while we're talking about it too, but let me look at that amendment and see if there's something that's better.
Okay, and 10, six, the top one, B. First shall, first floor shall contain a minimum of 65% of windows on all facades facing the road. Is that standard language in a lot of the communities? Page 10, six.
10, six. Um, that's where, this is standard language a lot that we use in a lot of our, our village business areas, the 65.
So it's not out of the ordinary, is what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
No. You know, but I, I guess I would, like I mentioned, take, you know, we received some public comment related to that, maybe it would be appropriate to look at what we have there and maybe decrease that number. I'm not saying going to 10%, but maybe 50 or 40 would be appropriate, but 65 is, is what we use.
I, when I read it, it hit me as a lot.
Yeah, me too.
So it didn't surprise me. And then as he gave examples, it, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Other communities around here, what do they use so, you know, what in other zoning?
You know what? Um, I'm trying to think, you know, I didn't look at the windows like in the village of Elk Rapids or anything like that, if they have any requirements. That would be the only, I could look at that though and see what they use in Elk Rapids, if they use anything, because some places don't. You know, you're really looking at windows when you're trying to do, you know, pedestrian kind of oriented and village feel, so you're looking for those communities that already either have villages established or are looking to establish them. So I can look and see if.
Yeah, if you want to, I mean, Elizabeth commented, you know, that's one of the things that was driven. So it seems like 65% is kind of high. Does that mean 65% of the whole wall area of the facade or 65% of the length of?
It would be, of the first floor, 65% of it would have to be windows.
Okay.
So, I mean, like that's what, this is like 50, 40% probably. This wall, I mean, if you look, every window, there's about a space between the window that's the same size as the window. You know, it might be a little bit smaller.
But that, that's not running space, that's that wall, we're talking about 65% of what we're talking about, anything that's exposed to the outside could be too.
Anything that would be like your front, that's right on, towards the street. So in this building, it would be that wall, for example, so.
65% of the whole wall, not.
Right, right, so.
It could be small windows and still get 65% of running along the wall.
Right.
That's why I want to make sure, so the whole wall, that seems to me kind of high too. Okay.
So one other thing, Sarah, putting on my other hat, with a 10-foot side setback, especially if it were a three-story structure, if it came to fire, you would barely have enough room to get a ladder up against the house at a proper angle to get up to that third, third floor. So a 10-foot setback to, I, I know it's encroaching if you make it a larger minimum, but I'm not entirely sure that that's safe in terms of fire protection. You certainly couldn't get any equipment in, you know, through there or into the back with those setbacks.
Yeah, so that's on page 10, four, it's item B up on.
Sarah, are we allowed to have three stories?
Um, this one had, this has a building height of 41 feet, so it does not have a limit on the number of stories.
Well, it says that the highest floor level occupied by humans can't be more than 21 feet.
Right.
So that would put you into a third story.
Okay.
Let me look at the chart real quick just to see if there's something different in there, because sometimes stuff hides out there. Nope, it just has the building, building height maximum of 41, which we have in, so we've got 35 for our residential districts for R1, R2, R3, and then all of our other districts. Village residential, agriculture, village business, commercial, all have. residential, agriculture, village business, commercial, all have 41 feet for maximum height.
Could you just pull that up on the nice little chart that you've made for yourself?
No, this is in the ordinance. It's just not, it's in Article 5, kind of all by itself.
I thought maybe that was a preview of.
No, I would make this if it did not exist though. So I'll look into that window a little bit more.
I've got something on this G on page 12-3. Required landscaping. Screening between uses talks for the consistency of native vegetation shall be established, but doesn't say anything about native in the next paragraph on foundation plantings. Or the right of way. Doesn't say anything about native.
So that came over because that's existing, that screening with native language is in your existing village business. And so that, I brought it over from there. Did I change it even from here? No, I didn't. In Article 12, the end of that says village business and village residential. I did a copy and paste. That should say commercial there. Let me look and see if there's any more detail of native in your landscaping.
I know that was one thing that Heidi Schaefer from the Conservation District talks about, the native plantings and maybe it's not appropriate in a small town, you know, village. But I would think it would be important to be consistent with that.
Are we just going through and roughing out all of our comments and questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Barfing, but okay.
All right. Let me know when it's my turn.
I don't think there's anything in here about it. So it would just be up to interpretation of what native is. I mean, there's guidebooks out there for locally what native is. So we could always rely as a planning commission on those native, you know, say this guidebook because it's got native species in it. But we should be more specific about what, what we're looking for there.
More specific than native?
I think that, I mean, you can find material on what's native to Northern Michigan or to Michigan in general. So I think it's okay. I mean, preferably I'd like to have some sort of guidebook you refer to. But I think the native is a, you know, okay for now for what we have. Considering we don't have any landscaping requirements and now we're adding some in.
Should that say native in all three of those paragraphs then?
Yeah, I think that it, yeah, it could. I could just put in a general landscaping, like a first.
Subparagraph there.
Yeah. And then say all landscaping shall be native material and then go into more detail. And I'll do that in both the commercial and the village area.
It can be your turn.
Laura, you're up.
Okay, all right.
Give us the page you want us to look in.
On 10-2, F. That one made me think, oh wait, so regardless of size, if I have a shop that has an upper floor, I'm good. That one seemed odd to me. And then like that one.
I have a, would you clarify?
Yeah. So, so it's saying, you know, upper bottom D, it says, yeah, 3,000 feet of these stores is good. It's allowed. And then we get to F and it says offices, shops, stores and similar uses, residential uses on upper floors. So it doesn't give you any limit on your shop size, but as long as you've got a residential use on the upper floor, you're good.
Is that what you want it?
No.
Do you want to? I mean, we could. Like, do you want the shops and stores to be limited to this, a similar size as what we have for the retail stores? Say offices, shops and stores less than 3,000.
I guess in my mind, a retail store could be a shop.
Well, that's the thing. These uses are kind of, some of them cross over in other areas. So they're.
We're not excluding you anywhere else to have residential uses upstairs, right?
We could just take that front part off and just say residential uses on upper floors. Because you could put a residential use over any of these commercial uses. Do we really care which commercial, commercial use it's over? Is that where you were heading?
And the bottom, if it's based 3,000 square feet, yep, it can be 3,000 for residential.
Yeah. So we'll just change that to just say residential uses on upper floors so that we're not putting, although we allow a single family, you know, main floor, single family dwelling in that district anyway. So if we want to, yeah, a mixed use. So I'll just change it to residential uses on the upper floor so that we have that option and keep from missing something else in there.
I don't know. As I read through this 3,000, to me it seemed like a little bit small, but then you just gave us examples. So maybe it's not. I don't know. I could probably be.
Twice the size of this room.
Maybe. I don't know. On 10-4. Oh, I guess. I wasn't sure that we, I don't know if I would want a higher end on that. What if I want like a beer cave, the biggest beer cave on my Eastport market. So, you know, it's, it's.
Where are you listening?
Oh, sorry, 10-4.
So you'd want to take off that 15,000 square feet, just say anything over 3,000 square feet requires a special use permit and not have that high end.
Yeah, that was my thought.
Would you repeat that, Laura, please?
You're talking about Q right here, right?
Yeah.
And you're having issue with the 15,000 square feet?
Yeah, just removing the upper end.
So it would just say anything over 3,000 square feet in similar uses?
Because you've got to apply for the special use anyway. So once you get in there, if you're proposing.
I also was similar thing in commercial. It's a limitation there and especially, and maybe I'm staying on some limitation abilities. I don't see why we're limiting it commercial. I see what the argument goes both ways. Just a special use and you come up with a plan, you got to meet all the other criteria, space, setback and everything else.
Yeah.
Okay. And that might avoid any back conform issues too.
Good night. Yes, I hadn't thought of it. It's a good point. I mean, I'm not sure on the sizes, but we limit a grocery store, a hardware to 15,000 square feet, but we don't care how big a lumberyard is?
You know, because they're going to be, well, the yard itself is going to be large.
A veterinary hospital, a greenhouse. I, I mean, why limitations here but not there?
I think because we're afraid of big box stores in our community.
All we're limiting is retail stores. That's all we're saying here, retail stores, limiting the size.
I guess to say it more positively.
But it also says, I, I know what you're saying, but bakeries, delicatessen, I, I don't know. It seems odd where they drew the line here in some ways. I mean, you can have a laundromat that's over 15,000 square feet.
Isn't everything underneath it limited to that 15,000 reading it right now? And have those special use, any of those underneath is the way I was reading it unless they're not reading it from. So it was just a list, grocery stores, convenience stores, hardware stores, all of them at 15,000 that has written it right now, not that I pre-reading 15,000.
Right.
It might not, right? So limiting all of them. What are, what other ones are you referring to things above it?
Right.
Like the lumberyards?
Right. Short-term rentals, greenhouses. I, you know, and a bakery, delicatessen, sandwich or coffee shop, we're worried about them getting too vague? I mean, it just seems like a, yeah, it just seems like an odd division to me.
Yeah. And that's what's in the current ordinance. I mean, if you wanted to pull some of those stores out, you know, if you said, okay, a bakery, we don't care how large it is, or a bookstore.
What about all these ones with the same limitation?
Or just say any one of these uses that's over 3,000 square feet?
Needs a special use permit.
I mean, I guess they do. So.
I think, though, good point there. Because, yeah, why these, just say any one of those lodging or anything in the village, we don't, don't want that.
Right. I mean, you could do that. That would treat all the uses the same. You would say any use that has a building more, in the village business, any use that has a, a structure larger than 3,000 square feet is required to have a special use permit.
That would simplify this, wouldn't it?
It would.
So, so where does bed, like a bed and breakfast fall on here? So if I've got a 4,000 square foot bed and breakfast, I need a special use instead of permitted?
Right.
I don't love it. Do you want me to go on or?
Yeah. Where you at?
I don't know yet. Oh, 10-5. The landscaping, like D. I don't know that I like something really specific. It says a mixture of ground cover ornamental trees and shrubs. I mean, do we have to say specifically trees and shrubs? What if it's other kinds of vegetation? Like, I don't like shrubs because snakes hide under them and mosquitoes. So can I put something else there that's some kind of vegetation? Do we have to say something specific? I probably wouldn't.
I think if you don't put anything there, people will just plant gra, grass, like regular green grass.
Let me give you an example, Laura. We, we may miss the boat. I'm going to call it the green business.
I know. You guys don't like that. I think it looks nice.
Okay. Had, he had restrictions in here for a ground cover. I think it looks pretty good, by the way, where he's got it. We may have required more ground cover in there to soften up the look. We didn't have that restriction at the time. So that's kind of where Sarah's going with it. And when he's got it done, it looks pretty good, quite frankly. It could have gone the other way.
What if I planted a bunch of butterfly bushes? I guess, is that a shrub?
Yeah. I mean, I could do trees, shrubs, grasses. I mean, butterfly bush, I guess I'd call it.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't, I don't, I think of a shrub and I think of those blacky thing where snakes hide. And it doesn't, so everything looks very conform. I don't know. I don't.
Plants.
Plants, yeah. Plants. I don't know. Just give me my thoughts.
I understand what you're saying.
Doesn't mean it's right.
I don't know what word I'm looking for, but I understand what you're saying. And I think we can add some language in there to make you happy.
10-6. Oh, I, just the last line, six feet in height. That wasn't anything other than that.
For trash?
Yeah. It's high instead of height.
Then 12-1. I guess in, in commercial, I was just, I, I don't know that 3,000 for commercial, I, I would have bumped it up.
I mean, we could go larger there because you're not dealing with the village hamlet feel. You're dealing in the commercial. It's generally more highway-like or larger, there's larger parcels. So if you, if you'd like to go, you know, they don't have to be the same. So definitely if you want to go up to 5,000 there or something.
Yeah, I would have gone higher. I don't remember.
You're thinking 5,000?
That's what I had noted, yeah.
Does anybody have a problem with making that 5,000 in the commercial? Okay.
I think that's.
Okay. And I think the only, only other thing I had was.
Laura, I don't mean.
Yeah, sorry.
Take that. So you're talking about 5,000 in a commercial lot?
Yeah.
That's a good point. That's one of the ones I had.
10-6, as we were talking about the siding. I think to rule out steel, I'm, last meeting, we had that one store that I won't say that it's just terrible and that's what it is. It's a steel siding. But I know like on the way into Charlevoix, there's, I don't know, the architectural, I don't know what it is, but it's a, it's a steel building, but they've added some wood on the front. So it looks very nice. So I don't, I wouldn't want to rule that out. I don't know if maybe saying like a mixture helps.
And does that have the, like the front is wood, but the other sides are all steel?
It's all, it's one of those, I don't know what we call.
Box of wood.
I don't know. Yeah, okay.
Oh, so the roof is all steel essentially in the.
Yeah. And the front is steel, but they've added around the doorway some wood and it's a very dramatic, beautiful effect, I think.
Yeah. So I mean, if, I could say something about steel exterior shall contain a mixture, you know, like to get away from full steel.
Yeah.
You know, like the only way you do that is allow steel with.
Some kind of architecturally pleasing.
Result.
Wordsmith there.
How does everybody else feel about the steel exteriors? Allowing them as a mixture with the other materials or should they stay not allowed?
I don't care for it.
The steel?
You know.
I think there's other options.
See, I, I wish there was, you know, you can make a steel building that's attractive. You know, I think what we're trying to avoid is just a big boxy, one-colored.
Tin building.
Pole barn.
Yeah.
And, and, but you know, sometimes metal is, I mean.
It's cheaper.
It has a lot of advantages too, you know, and, and there are some places that'd be sensible, you know, and I, I feel like we're, I mean, you can make an ugly vinyl building and an ugly brick building too, that nobody would like. Right. You know, it's, right. I mean, you know, it's not the material. It doesn't seem like.
Yeah, I wish there was a good way to, like, like you started to in that, like the first, I don't know, you started to say about how it should look, but it's so vague. I don't know how you get that kind of wording with, just make it pretty.
Right. Because you're talking about a pole barn, but the pole barn is like a type of structure where you have poles and you put steel around it. So that's why when you're like, we don't want a pole barn, and you're like, that's what people think of. But if somebody gets really technical and says, well, this isn't a pole barn, and I'm putting steel on the side of some, you know, wood framed house. So then they still get the steel and it's kind of a technicality, but.
Is there any way to say that, you know, we're saying here sometimes it's good, some can still with wood or with some kind of other fancy, you know, things you can put on, something that can be reviewed at that point in time and come in instead of saying, no, we don't want this or that?
Right. I mean, the planning commission is reviewing all of these structures because all of these commercial structures have to come here either as site plan or special use. I would need to put some sort of kind of qualifier in there. So you, the planning commission can't just have unlimited discretion and say, if we like what the way this building. So I'd have to say, you're allowed to use steel if you meet this criteria. Or, you know, something like that, which I'm not exactly sure what that would look like. But I'd have to somehow, if you wanted to give that ability to the planning commission to look at what your building looks like and determine if it meets the feeling, kind of like an architectural control committee that you have in your homeowners. But they don't have the same strict requirements like we do that we can't be.
I don't want it so tied everybody down that we're including something just in general. But on the other hand, I want it so open that I didn't know how it can be done. Maybe it can't be. But you're right. In committee, I've been in kind of meetings where they review the plans, the site plans and everything.
Do we have neighboring communities that have that statement in there?
Do we have what?
Neighboring communities that have that statement about steel?
I'd have to look. In my experience, a lot of communities, no, I shouldn't say a lot, but many communities have, they try to limit their first row to nice looking buildings and then say you can put the pole barns out back in the commercial districts. There's a lot. There's a lot of times what you'll see when they're trying to get those natural materials out front. A lot of villages have the materials, and they talk about these, you know, natural materials as being what they look for in kind of a village area.
I noticed that that first part of that paragraph C, custom facade being constructed of high-quality materials. The steel exterior is talking about the whole structure, not just the facade. So, maybe it doesn't belong in that same paragraph? Or, excuse me. They're natural materials. But see, it could be, it could be like the one that somebody said that has the, the wood on the facade and steel behind or the roof.
So would you want, if you had a, just a square building, say this green building, say he put wood on the front of his, but the rest of it was steel. What do you think about that?
I think that's reasonable.
I think, I think it looks nice as it is, or that would look nice as well.
Side facing the street.
Right, the street facing.
I think that's reasonable.
And the remaining. Yeah?
Does it have to be all of it, then? All of it?
Well, as drafted, it would be all of it as a natural material on the front, and then, I mean, you could do a percentage of it or something like that, if you wanted to say that.
But if you just, if you just say that this facade shall be constructed out of those high-quality materials, then just don't say anything about the rest of it.
Right, exactly. I'd just strike that second sentence, if you're okay, if you're okay with that having the facade be one, and then potentially having the other three sides. You still could see some of the sides from the road, and they'd be steel, but.
I think that's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, just do the, do the front. It's kind of a compromise for you, Laura.
All right.
Laura, anything else?
No, that was it. Thank you.
East side of the room?
I've got a couple of questions, a number of them. You know, we talked about the impervious area. And, I love.
Give us the page, Cole.
Yeah, there's, it's mentioned in a couple of places, it seems like, but I'm, I'm 10-5. C right at the top there.
It's also on 12-3.
Yeah, it's mentioned in the commercial bit also. I don't, is it the same there, too?
Yes.
Okay. Maximum lot coverage for building to 70% of the total. Maximum impervious, I guess my first question is, where do these numbers that you pick come from? Are they?
That's what, I mean, they're kind of standard in your.
Okay.
Impervious, and, so the, I mean, the difference is, I'm trying to explain the difference between lot coverage and impervious surface. I could also do that in a definition, but that, there's a lot coverage are buildings only, and then impervious is buildings plus everything else.
Well, I guess, it sounds like, and, you know, and that's supposed to be important for water quality, and we don't have storm sewer systems around here to deal with it, so it's nice to have area for it to soak in, but, you know, it still seems like a lot to me, but it's a lot to ask, but on the other hand, too, everybody is also, got to keep in mind when you have one of these sites, you're going to have to have a septic system on there, I believe, which can take up a considerable amount of space, and I believe the county also requires that you have a area, a second area, a reserve area, they call it, so you've not only got an area for your septic system, but you have a dedicated area where if that fails, you could install another tile field here. And then you need the well, too, and, and, is that part of the 85%?
No, that'd be outside.
That, so that's part of the 15% is the septic field.
Right. Yeah, the, I, I understand what you're saying, and it does seem like a high number. When you look in the village, the minimum lot size is 12,500 square feet. So if you have somebody that has a very small lot, maybe they should have a larger lot, but also at the same time, when you're looking at the area for them to cover, I mean, that is still quite substantial. You know, if I'm looking at a.
Right, because all the runoffs have, and that's the other question, you kind of tailed into it, you know, have you looked at the lot sizes? You said the average one in village business is how big?
I don't know what the average size of the lot is. I, just the minimum lot size that you're required to have is 12,500, so if you had that size of a lot, you would, could cover it with 8,000, 8,500 square feet of building. You still have to have all your parking and everything, but that's where that impervious number comes in for the 85%. So the impervious one's a little bit more concerning, because parking lots can get kind of large, depending on your use and how many spaces you need to have. But covering 85% of a lot is, that's a lot of coverage on your lot.
Yeah, if the lots are, most of the lots conforming lots, when you say?
You know, I don't know. I would guess that most of the lots are probably that 12, 12,500, you know, would meet that requirement.
Right, because I think of it from the ZBA point of view, too. We don't want to end up with a regulation that makes it very difficult for anybody to use the lot without getting a variance on this, that, or the other thing, and.
Yeah, I think you're going to run up against the impervious surface situation more than the lot coverage with the buildings, honestly, because of the parking areas. But you're, you know, you are correct when you say that you've got to have an area for your septic in commercial businesses.
And then there's the setbacks, and now the landscaping, and all of this, and, and it, you know, you start to design a lot, it starts to get confusing, and I hope that we're looking at this to make sure we don't create, you know, lots that are virtually impossible to develop. And I'm certainly not familiar with all the village business lots, so, you know, and a couple of the comments, I guess 3,000 square feet seemed a little bit small to me. I'm not sure, I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot. And also the parking, you mentioned that, the parking is our, you got that from our current requirements. In some cases, it seems very limited, the number, the amount of parking you're supposed to.
Yeah, that's additional information. Bill had just asked me about parking requirements, and I pulled out some of those, the uses that we have listed in the table and what's required for that. So, yeah, I mean, when you're looking at, you know, grocery store, you have two plus one for every 200 square feet, and you're going, okay, well, Eastport Market, you know, is a.
I know, I don't know how many they have, but they have a lot of parking spots out there.
75 spaces?
Yeah, it would be interesting to take a use case and see if it's possible. I, yeah, I also noted, I was, I got out the calculator, and I was looking at that one, and I'm like, I, I don't know. I'm just going to trust that this is smart. Smarter than me.
Parking usually is not smart. That's one of the things in the, in the rewrite that talks about maximums out of minimums, because we've, zoning always had done the minimum parkings, and then you get these huge parking lots. You know, does Eastport Market need 75 parking spaces? I mean, maybe on the day before landscaping.
Not delineated, but they could.
You know, yeah.
In July and August, sometimes.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, July and August, sometimes.
You know, but, and I mean, when you look at 75 spaces, I don't know how many spaces they have out there. I mean, they probably have more than you think. You know, but they probably don't have 75, except for, you know, you probably can park around the, you know, not marked spaces, and make it work, but. Usually our parking standards require way too much parking that we just don't need and is not used, and is just costly even to develop, because you're required to pave all that parking lot for nobody to ever use it.
There's no one.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I guess that's something that, you know, maybe that's something that should be looked at more in a case-by-case, and the special use permits, especially, too, because depending on what somebody's intended use is, you don't want to have them, you know, tell them they only need a minimum of three, when really we all know they should probably have a dozen, or tell them they need 20, when we know they'll never use more than five of them. It's just, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense, and. I'm looking for solutions.
You good with everything?
With all the points that are being brought up, I'm very interested in it.
Anything else? Well, we've got two things we can do. Probably have more, but two things. We can ask Sarah to go back and do a rewrite, and push this to the next meeting, and review the rewrite. In the next meeting, just to refresh your memory, is next Tuesday night. Okay, or you can move forward with the corrections that we've done here. So.
Could I make a motion? I'd like to see the rewrite before I make any decision. We covered a lot of really good points, but I think I'd like to see it again after.
Before scheduling your public hearing?
I make a motion to proceed with the rewrite, and if you think you can get it to us before the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll have to do it tomorrow. Put it in your packet.
Yep. Do we have a second? Can we have a second discussion?
Is that for Tuesday night's meeting?
That's right.
So your packet will be available sometime late on Friday for you to start.
Right, and I believe we already have a considerable.
Say that again, please?
A considerable agenda, probably, on Tuesday, yeah.
Trust me, you've got a lot more than this pending. Okay, so it's up to you. I mean.
I mean, the alternative is to schedule a special meeting, maybe the next week to deal with it, or we put it on the agenda. If we're too tired by the end of the night, then we can schedule a special meeting Tuesday to deal with this item.
Well, I just think it's something.
Have another special meeting, because this is, go through this, because with everything going on Tuesday, I'm just saying, overwhelmed, that gives us some more time to review its material. Bill, I just.
I don't have any problem with that, but I'm just.
I just.
Right, I mean, we are on a time, because of the moratorium, that's this, that's the push to try to continue moving things forward, so I don't want to rush you. I want you to make good decisions.
How many days do we have left in this period? Because is the.
I can help you with, if we did all this, okay, if we moved it to the next special meeting date, because we have other things that can be covered. Public hearing is the example, on two issues, that didn't get in the newspaper in time. If we did all that, we could have a special meeting on the 29th of October.
To the Friday.
It's Friday. You could have a special meeting to cover the public hearing portion of Chapter 20, which is the ZBA. Okay, and the High Watermark is pending out there as well, and then cover this as well. So which, would you have a preference?
Okay, we go back. So, we have the public hearing, then you, if we, on this wouldn't be a public hearing, it would just be the review of the material.
Yes, it'd be one of the agenda items.
Then after you do that, you'll say we pass something, then you have to go to the public hearing?
Yes, in, in November, December, whatever they would be. Are we clear on that?
I think so.
Okay.
Clear as luck.
I mean, we could.
Did I lose you?
Okay, so, I, what is it, what is the plan? Are we going to review this next week?
Well, that's what I'm trying to decipher now. So here's, here's what's on the table for you. We have this, which we can review Tuesday night, but if you're not aware, we have a pretty sensitive issue on Tuesday night, that's going to require a lot of dialogue. Or we can move this to a later date to review, and if we move it to a later date, your options are going on October 29th to get it in with all the public hearing information.
Can we do it before?
No, because it's got, the public hearing notices have to hit the paper by next Thursday's publication. 15 days would bring it to the 29th of October.
So, Bill, the only thing is that if, if you wanted to have a public hearing on this amendment, you would need to make the motion tonight to have a meeting on the 29th, so we can publish it. If you just want to come back to a meeting to review this document, we could do it anytime, but we won't be having a public hearing on it.
Yeah, that was my, that was my thought. Not have a public hearing on this?
No, just.
But on the 29th, guys, we could depend on what you want to do. That, that would not be a public hearing on this. This would be discuss the rewrite.
And that's the soonest.
Like I said, it's a public hearings for the other two issues.
Yes, I put them both on the agenda.
And that's the 15 days and all that.
Just give us more time to review it, more time, you know, to get it to us by the 29th. I, you know.
Or you could slide the whole thing to November.
I thought it sounded like we all were pretty much in agreement on things. I would be surprised if I was surprised at anything that Sarah would put in there. So I would be up for trying to review it at the next meeting. However, I don't know if I've seen the agenda, so I don't know if I'm.
The only thing on the agenda is Torchport, so I don't, you know.
Is that, what is that?
For, to make a decision, to review the findings of fact, and to make a decision for Torchport.
If we did, if we thought that we could review your, your changes at the beginning and get it done with, I think that would be fantastic.
What do you think, Bill?
Then I would.
I mean, is this, this more pressing than, because we have that moratorium to review these changes, it'd probably take less time than Torchport?
Yeah, she asked me my thought. My thought is, we don't do it Tuesday night.
Okay.
This is important. Okay, this is an ordinance that will dictate a lot, that will be done in our township in the future. I think it requires more time than that to really give it thought, but that's just my opinion.
And I'm going to say, I really don't want Tuesday, no, thanks, we have, you know, time to here. I want to spend some good time reviewing it and everything else. And then again, it's a special meeting, if we wanted to, a special meeting, why do one of that, just shoot it to 29th, have it as one of the agenda?
Laura, your point's taken. I got it. I'm just thinking, if we put both of these on the agenda, for Tuesday night, Torchport and this, we have two really heavy things to discuss. And my guess would be that we'll have a packed house on Tuesday because of the air fryer. Just a guess.
So you want to, and you want to wait until the 29th for the public hearings on those other things and bring this back?
That would be my suggestion, yes.
To review this?
Does that make sense to you guys? Make the motion. Good? I'd like to make a motion that we have a special hearing to review the changes to this zoning ordinance that we're covering tonight on the 29th of October, and also have two public hearings, one for Section 20, that was presented to us by the ZBA, and one for the High Watermark.
Excuse me, you want a public hearing on what we did?
Not on this.
No, no, okay, I thought you said.
Just to review language.
Review of it. Okay, I want to make sure I heard it right.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion?
Do we have a time for that, or are you going to do that next?
I don't have a time for that. Well, my consideration is, we have people on this commission to work. If, Friday night at 5:00 would be great, because you get out of the way early, but if you can't make it, I mean, you're one of the people that work, that puts you in.
If you can make it any later, like 5:30.
We can make it any time you want. Would I, would 5:30 work for you better?
Yes, on the 29th.
On the 29th?
I won't be here.
You will. He won't be here. Okay, Cole, 29th.
You know, I can't tell you for sure. The time is, I'm, I'm either here or I'm not, so the time is.
Let me write that down, Yogi.
7:00, 5:30, 5 o'clock.
He's got to get with his wife.
The question is, yeah, I'm not sure whether I have other.
The question is, guys, this is exercising utility, if we don't have a quorum.
Well, I guess we're going to have to have Sarah do the.
Party, if I know. I mean, Jerry can be there, you can be there, Laura can be there, so that's a quorum.
We got a quorum. Okay, let's do that. So the motion, the motion has been suggested, seconded, discussed, vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next.
What about the other motion that Yuri had opposed, and that was already seconded, and then it was just popped out there, and you need another motion? So we need to go back.
You're going to have to refresh my memory.
Yeah.
Does Yuri have a motion to have a rewrite provided for review at next Tuesday meeting?
He's going to withdraw that motion?
You're right.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion. I didn't show how to do it. Thank you.
You'll withdraw your second.
Veronica, you good with that?
Thank you for catching that. I was going to ask.
Okay, the next on the agenda is adjournment. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Can I have discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.